All right. Good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, and it's 5:00 p.m. You're at a planned commission meeting in the City of Wausau. I will note that it looks like our entire commission is present in person. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the April 29th, 2021, meeting. I would entertain a motion. Okay, we've got a motion by Brueggemann. Do I have a second? Second by, oh my gosh, Bornerman, there's so many B names. All those in favor of approving the minutes can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes, you needn't miss lead. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for discussion and possible action on approving a conditional use at 360-372 Grand Avenue to allow for institutional residential land use, which includes a homeless shelter in an urban mixed-use zoning district. Would you like to take this? Just give us a little...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So, this is for the Community Partners Campus. I don't know, maybe you've heard about this project. And this is just a portion of their proposed project. There's going to be multi-functions in the building. They're going to be renovating the building substantially and adding on. And one of the uses is the warming center for Catholic Charities, which has been located in different spots, but it would be brought into this location. And I guess technically, from a zoning perspective, that would require a conditional use permit, whereas the other uses would be permitted by right. So, this would be the public hearing for the conditional use for the warming center.
With that, the public hearing is now open. If there's anybody who'd like to speak to this, feel free to... I see we've got some, I recognize Roberto on WebEx. I don't know if you'd like to speak, but if anyone would like to speak, you get three minutes. I think you're trying to speak, but we have you muted. Let me just see if we can unmute you.
Roberto Arturo.
All right, we just unmuted... I'm sorry, Roberto, we just unmuted you. We are ready to hear from you now. If you could start over.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Roberto Arturo. I'm the Executive Director of Catholic Charities. And as you know, we run the warming centers in Wausau. During this past year, because of the pandemic, we had to locate in very different locations. We had to move to different places in order to keep the space necessary. With the Community Partners Building, we have been in conversations for over a year to provide us with a permanent place to move our offices and as well as to move the services that we provide. So, we will not only run a community warming center, but we will have our St. Lawrence program and our offices where we provide different services, financial assistance. We provide rent assistance, utility assistance. We have an immigration program. We have an adoption program that we will be locating our offices to be operating on that location. The warming center will operate initially, we'll be operating on a six-month basis, but we plan in the future to run a year-round, to be at 365 days. And it operates from 7:00 in the evening to 8:00 in the morning. Kevin Birch just joined us. So, Kevin is our Program Housing Director. And he can, Kevin, if you would like to add something to the program, to the program that we'll be running. I think we just lost...
We just unmuted him. Kevin, can you hear us?
Kevin, can you hear us?
I'm having difficulty hearing Roberto, and I don't know... I'm not sure if it's my connection or...
Well, we can hear you, so if you want to kind of jump on in and talk to us about this project.
We are talking about the warming center, so if you can describe what the warming center will do at that location.
Can everybody hear me okay? I think my connection is not working.
We can hear you. We just can't see you. But we're good if you just want to talk. We can listen. Oh, all right. I think he left us.
Okay.
So, we have another person here who'd like to speak. If you'd like to state your name and address for the record, take your comments.
David Bliven, 2184 Forest Grove Avenue in Mosenee. I am the Volunteer Project Manager for Community Partners Campus. And I'd just like to mention the rationale about why it's so important to have Catholic charities in this facility. This is a, being designed as a one-stop shop, if you will, for people who are disadvantaged in our community, who are really trying to address hunger and homelessness. And to do that, we really felt like we need to have everything in one location. So, we have the Neighbor's Place. We have Catholic Charities. The Free Clinic is going to be located here. North Central Community Action Program, which will help provide some housing. North Central Health Care is going to provide some staffing for mental health services. Catholic Charities, besides the homeless shelter, is going to have financial counseling available for anyone who comes to the building. They'll also have pre-adoption and post-adoption services. Let's see, there's like 15 different nonprofits that'll be in this building. And we are actually almost full to capacity with tenants already. And we have people waiting in line that want to come in. The concept is just, it's mind-boggling for me. I've never seen anybody do this, and I think it's going to be crazy successful. And having Catholic charities here is really essential to our business plan to help the community.
Thank you. All right, Kevin, we see you've appeared again. Would you like to give us a couple of comments?
Yes, and I'm sorry, I was having Internet issues connecting, and I think we've all managed to have that happen. So, I'm hoping, now that I'm hardwired in, it'll be better.
Looks good.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can see and hear you.
Okay, so I did hear Roberto a little bit describe what the programming would be. So, it is the Wausau Warming Center, and our hours of operation would be seven in the morning until, or seven at night, I apologize, until eight in the morning. And I think Roberto did allude to the fact that we would be going 365 days a year at some point. And then during the day, we would have our St. Lawrence Community Services Program, offering housing counseling and financial education. And those hours of operation would roughly be between nine and four. And then we would also be providing some day services to people who are in need. So, we do have a hygiene closet, some different things that people could take advantage of while they are there. And then also working with homeless prevention programs. And then we do foreclosure prevention, anything from those that are homeless on the streets to that type of housing counseling, so.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on this specific conditional use permit at 360 and 372 Grand Avenue? That's my second time. I'll call for the last time, the third time, if there's anybody who'd like to comment on this conditional use permit. Or, yep. All right, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed, and we do not vote on this, or do we?
We don't need to, no. We'll come back as staff next month with a report of findings and a recommendation on any conditions that we think the commission may want to place on this conditional use or none at all. I guess we'll take a look at it, and the next vote at Plan Commission will be the final approval.
Perfect. We look forward to seeing you next month. Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is another public hearing for discussion and possible action on rezoning 510 South 32nd Avenue, 3205 Seymour Lane, from an institutional zoning district to a single-family residential to zoning district, City of Wausau. This public hearing is now open. Or maybe I would let Brad give a little spiel on it.
Sure. Well, just real quickly, this property, it has two addresses, but it's just one property. It's the former Westside Fire Station. It is still owned by the city. There is an interested party in purchasing, yet the city did put it up for sale once the new fire station was open just a block to the east. So, this is a vacant building. The city would like to dispose of it in some fashion. We did have an initial proposal that wasn't necessarily all that well-received by some of the council members. So, this is a different proposal, actually, for a single-family residence to occupy the building. It would go under substantial renovation, and seems to be, I guess, more palatable to the neighbors and folks on City Council. The zoning right now is institutional. It's sort of leftover from when the city had owned the property. But the proposal would be to go to SR2. Let me just... All right, there we go. So, the proposal is to go to SR2 Single Family Residence District. Crisis averted there, potentially. So, yeah, I think, you know, this does fit in with the surrounding neighborhood. There's single-family residential to the west, and, you know, 32nd Avenue kind of becomes the dividing line then between the residential on the west and the more commercial uses to the east. So, I guess staff is supportive of this zoning change.
All right.
And I guess just to note, there was something received, an email earlier today. Short email, I think the person was supportive of the concept, although they may have thought that the building was being torn down, which is not the case. The building will remain and be renovated. There's potentially room to divide the lots, although we haven't looked exactly at the particulars there. But it's, the proposal right now is just to keep it one lot, keep the building, and renovate it for a single-family home.
Okay. So, with that, the public hearing for this zoning change is now open. If there's anybody here that would like to talk about it. All right, second time, if anybody's here and would like to talk about the rezone from the fire station to a single-family residential, please approach the podium, or if you're online. Okay, last time, if anybody would like to talk about the rezone on 510 South 32nd Avenue, 3205 Seymour Lane, from institutional to residential. All right, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed. Okay, all right, with that, I guess I would entertain a motion on this rezoning request. Oh, boy, everyone wants to motion to approve, but I saw... Oh, my gosh, I saw Neil, and I saw Bornerman. Yeah? And then I heard Balkan. I guess, any discussion here? Yes. Anyone want to talk about it? We just want to vote? All right, all of those in favor of rezoning 510 South 32nd Avenue and 3205 Seymour Lane from institutional to single-family can signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we are set. All right. Next item on our agenda, discussion and possible action on approving a conditional use at 1900 Townline Road to allow for cultivation in a single-family residential zoning to district. I'm going to maybe toss that over to Bill.
Thank you. We have a short staff report in the packet here, very little comment at the public hearing. And because it's such a large parcel, staff was supportive of a conditional use, subject to the conditions outlined in the memo. Fieldwork operations will be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Maintain a gravel tracking pad to enter/exit the field. Maintain soil and erosion control measures at all times, and follow all state and local standards that are applicable to this site. And that's our recommendation as we approve, we recommend approval of the conditional use for cultivation on this property.
Okay. All right, I've got a motion to approve. I, Brueggemann, any second? Could I, Bornerman? Any discussion, questions? Yes, Mr. Neil?
When we do the motion to approve all these, do we have to make any mention of the adoption of the recommended guidelines? Or is that just assume that we're, when we approve it, we approve it with those?
Yeah, I guess if you can clarify if it includes the conditions or not.
Okay. Just where if it needs to be stated in the motion?
Yep, all right. So, Brueggemann says yes, it includes the conditions. I assume, did I have Neil seconding this one? Does that sound good with the conditions? Oh, Bornerman, good. Okay, any discussion?
Yes, please.
Yes, Mr. Neil?
I'm a little confused about this, you know, having tried to breed into it and, you know, state regulations and whatnot. And it seems to me, and I wish the assessor were here tonight to talk about this, because it seems like the assessor is a person who is authorized to approve designation as agricultural property. I don't know that we are even, you know, the right group to be approving that. It does have, you know, implications related to property tax and whatnot that, you know, would go to his, you know, to our assessor's office for review and whatnot. So, I mean, this is a pretty complicated item. I'm a little reticent to just go ahead and vote on it without a lot of background. Anybody have any background on this?
Mr. Neil, I can appreciate your comments on that. The assessor's office has worked with the owners on both this item and the next one, and both have been classified for that as an assessment. This body would just review land use per the zoning. And in our, different from our previous code, this code does allow the body to have review. So, we have the authority to say, well, this is a good fit, or maybe the conditions are that there's a bigger setback from a, you know, dense residential development, or whatever condition we feel would be necessary if, for whatever reason, there was a property in the center of town, we don't maybe want fertilizer coming through town, or something along that line. So, it may be just a formality in our review here, but we felt it was appropriate because it's such a large acreage and it's on the fringe of the city, that this is a good use, land use for a holding pattern until a residential development could occur.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Bornerman? Nope. Trying to check on, everyone's kind of in different spots now, so I'm staring. All right, I think we are ready to vote on approving the conditional use at 1900 Townline, including the request from staff on the zoning, on the criteria. All those in favor can signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next up, we're on to item number five, discussion and possible action on approving a conditional use at 2130 Northwestern Avenue to allow for cultivation in a single-family residential to zoning district. Bill, flip it over to you.
I did change the staff report here, just a touch, although it's very similar. It's a 17-acre parcel, and this one had a little more controversy with previous proposals. So, and it was a farmet previously, so kind of sat dormant for a few years. Owners cleaned up, removed an old barn, and removed that from the property. And similarly, this is just another holding property that they would like to have a holding pattern. I believe he has a five-year contract with the farmer to till it. So, our recommendations are the same as the previous one. Fieldwork operations limited during the day, and keep the streets clean, et cetera.
Is there a motion from anyone? Okay, motion to approve with staff recommendations from Brueggemann, and a second by Mr. Peckham. Any discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor of approving the conditional use at 2130 Northwestern Avenue to allow for cultivation in a single-family residential, along with the staff recommendations, can signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes, thank you. Moving on to item number six, discussion and possible action on approving the specific implementation plan at 617 and 621 Forest Street to allow for office space, vehicle sales, and a parking lot. A-okay properties. Flip it over to you, Brad.
Sure, thanks. So, yeah, this one was approved in terms of the general development plan last month. Again, it's sort of a multi-use project. The owner of Olson Tire would be tearing down an existing home and basically using it for parking for the different uses in the office building and his existing business. So, there's really one page that was submitted. There's enough detail last time in terms of a specific plan, but there were changes to the site plan that we, some of us had suggested last time as improvements to consider. And I guess the main one was the front setback off of Forest Street. Before, it was, I think, a two- or three-foot setback. There really wasn't a setback. There was a planter right up to the sidewalk, and there was limited drive aisles. They weren't wide enough previously to what our standard would be. There is, you know, we felt there was too much parking, given the size of the sites and what the uses would be. So, I guess this does address all of those concerns that we did have. The setback from the front, you know, the dotted line at the top, that does meet the 10-foot setback in our ordinance. There is still a planter bed there, but the parking spaces are setback from the sidewalk. There is a green strip between the planter and the sidewalk. Again, this is, you know, in line with our ordinance, what it says in terms of landscaping. Again, the drive aisles now, when you shifted this down, some were eliminated. There were 23 previously. Now, there's 17 overall, and there are adequate drive aisles. And, you know, I guess as staff, we feel it just functions better overall and is more in line with our ordinances currently. So, there is still, you know, we are still flexing the uses as noted last time. Those aren't really changing from the general plan. There still is not a setback on the back side. The pavement goes up to the property line, but since it runs into their property to the south, it's under common ownership, and there may be some back and forth between the properties. So, I guess we felt as staff that was, that would still be okay. I guess we're fairly satisfied with the changes that were made, and we'd recommend approval of the specific plans.
All right. Mr. Peckham?
Yeah, I was glad to see the applicant kind of come into compliance with what we heard from Mr. Lindman at last time, our last meeting, and the other suggestions that other staff has been recommending. And so, with those changes, I would now move to approve.
All right, we have a move to approve the specific implementation plan. Do I have a second? A second by Balkan. Any discussion or questions? All right, all of those in favor of approving the specific implementation plan at 617 and 621 Forest Street to allow for office space, vehicle sales, and a parking lot, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Moving on to item number seven, discussion and possible action on amending the specific implementation plan at 1140 West Bridge Street to allow for skills training in a planned unit development zoning district. That's Bridge Street Mission. Bill, looks like you're up.
Just, I, are you Mr. Vincent? Okay. I'll maybe just go over it quickly, and then you can comment. So, in my, in our staff report, I just outlined that Bridge Street Mission bought this property back in 2017, and in 2019, they moved a storage garage from their property at 107 Bridge Street down to 1140 West Bridge Street. And over the years, they've talked with staff about different uses the program wanted. And one of them was some skill training for some of the residents. And so, we just felt like as staff that this was a, maybe a minor tweak to the specific implementation plan, and we wanted to bring it forward to the Plan Commission to review. And maybe Mr. Vincent can speak to the program a little bit more thoroughly, but we did want to limit it to the residents of the apartment and not, you know, become a supplement to NTC or anything like that. So, that's just our concern. That was our only real concern about it.
I don't know, Mr. Vincent, if you'd like to share any comments, you're welcome to.
Well, Melissa had requested that I be present in case there are questions.
Okay.
But basically, we are, we are not just a residential apartment. We're actually a program, I think transitional housing-type program. So, there is class work going on, there's counseling going on, and one of the things we'd like to do is to allow them to do some vocational-type training in small groups. And that garage would be a very useful place for us to use that. And when I talked to Bill about permitting, he pointed out to me, and thank you, Bill, that there might be a zoning issue. So, I submitted information to Bill at that point. And so, certainly available for questions if anybody has it.
Thank you. Does anyone here have a question they'd like to ask? Looks like we got it. Thank you. I guess now is the time where I would entertain a motion. All right, we've got a motion by Brueggemann to approve with staff recommendations. A second, Mr. Neil? Any discussion further? All right, all those in favor of amending the specific implementation plan at 1140 West Bridge Street to allow for skills training in a planned unit development zoning district, including the staff recommendations that come along with it, can signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Next up is item number eight, discussion and possible action on amending the specific implementation plan at 800 Gilbert Street to allow for an office building in a planned unit development zoning district. That's ABC Rental Management and Rod Cox. Again, Bill, looks like you're up.
Thank you. So, in our staff report, we outlined the proposal here, and I guess I would point you to the site plan map. If anybody's familiar with this campus, I guess it was the old Wausau Hospital at 800, parts of 800 Gilbert Street. If we're looking at the property... Yeah, maybe that one. So, Hami Home and the Executive Director of Hami Home is on the call here as well. So, we'll bring them in at some point. Currently operates several different facilities on the north side of this block. And the parcel that's in question here is actually the third building from 7th Street. We have the old Lemons Community that ABC Property Management owns and operates an office there. And then the second building in is Bushka Properties, where this cursor is. And this third building was a building that had been vacant for several years, up to 20 years. And at one time was originally built as an isolation hospital, and then served as a property for housing for the aged, and now is just a kind of a dormant building. In our packet here, we have an outline of, we'd like to re-establish the building as a office occupancy. And Rod Cox went through the building and provided architectural plans for each floor. So, in their assessment, the building is structurally sound, it needs to have a new roof, and some updates to the interior, but their proposal is to run an office out of each floor. And Joe from, Joe Quants with ABC Rental, or Property Management, is here, and he can speak to their proposal as well.
Sure, I guess I'd open it up to Joe if you'd like to make a couple of comments. Going to make sure you're...
Sure. Did everybody hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Yeah, I, I'm not proposing anything very complicated, just would like to start using that building for some office space. We've been doing it at the, our current building and, you know, we're not, we're about seventy-five percent full and there's, you know, lots of interest in small commercial space, so we're just hoping to expand that same kind of a thing into this, this new building, same parking lot, so it's really close and I think the building will fit really well. Not sure what questions people will have, again, I'm also on if, if people wanted more information, so that's all I got.
Sounds good to me. Any questions for Joe?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the, the site, three floors, forty-four occupants per floor and my main question is, is there adequate parking? It's like a hundred, possibly a hundred and thirty-two plus people coming in.
Yeah, so if we compare the current building that I have right now, that's actually five floors of very similar laid out, about fifteen rooms per, per floor and this, this new building is going to have about fifteen parking spots where I think we have somewhere around eighteen for my current building, so these are not generally high-traffic or, it's not retail, so we're not going to have a lot of people coming in and needing parking spaces, but I believe it should be pretty adequate as far as my current building, its needs and we have some space available now as well for, for new people that might come into our current building, so if, if I'm going off of our current usage, I think it'll probably be a little bit more than we need.
Oh, Brianna, if you have anything to add on the...
I could add something too.
Oh, Bill, sorry. Looking at all my Bs here.
So, and then that's a good point, and we did, staff did, did look at this as well, this, this architectural plan is really looking at it at the worst-case scenario for an exiting standpoint. I think operationally, you know, you're going to get about one and a half person per office because you'll, maybe you have one visitor every other office, so the total occupant load in a practical sense is going to be much lower than the, the building exiting.
And I think you touched on it, but there is opportunity for shared parking, I believe, on the site overall, I mean, this is a, a planned unit development, so we're not necessarily fixed on a, a specific ratio, you know, of course, we want to provide enough parking, but we can be flexible if there are shared parking opportunities between, between properties within the same zoning district.
Any question, any other questions or comments? All right, I guess at this point, I would entertain a motion, or did I already, motion by Neil to accept the, to amend the specific implementation plan at 800 Gilbert Street, do I have a second? Second by Bergman, any further discussion? Looks like we are all ready to vote on amending the specific implementation plan at 800 Gilbert Street to allow for an office building in a planned unit development zoning district, so let's signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. All right, our next meeting is June 16th, so you can feel free to put that on your calendar. Last item is adjournment, I would entertain a motion.
Motion by Balkan.
Second by Bergman, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.